Especially for something as important as our local elections, you know, the national politics gets all the attention. But this is where a lot of the real business happens and a lot of things that impact your lives. My name's Clay Counts. I'm chairman of the Pickens County Republican Club. We're an auxiliary club under the SCGOP. And our goal, one of our goals is to host town halls and events like this so that the voters, you guys can learn from your candidates. So we have Easely City Council up here, the candidates for several of these races here that we're gonna take some questions from. But I'm gonna kick us off with a word of prayer and the pledge and we'll get going. Dear heavenly Father God, thank you for allowing us to come and gather here today. God, thank you for this church opening up its venue to us to allow us to come and learn about our candidates. God, thank you for all these men and women who have willingly put themselves forward to serve and put the interests of their town ahead of themselves. God be with us through this time together, allow us to honor you through our actions. It's through Jesus, I pray. Amen. All right, if you'll join me in the pledge, and Donna is right behind you. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to your public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, couple of things I will go ahead and get out of the way, kicking the night off. Over here at the entrance, we have a few things for you guys. There's a signup sheet for our mailing list. So we'd love for you to sign up, to be a part of our organization when we have events like these in the future. I promise not to bombard you, no more than five emails a day. No, it's not that much, maybe once a month. So I'd love for you guys to sign up. There's also a list over there. There are a number of board positions available at the county level that still need to be filled. So if you have an interest in serving, there's a wide range of areas that you can serve over there. There's also a number of candidate flyers, as well as the Moms for Liberty that came out tonight that have some wonderful information. Ron DeSantis's super PAC came out tonight, Never Back Down, so he has some information if you'd like to learn more about Governor DeSantis. Have a couple of other things to touch base on. There's a K-Tech event, and the reason I'm mentioning this, K-Tech's over on 183, the intersection of 183 and 135. One of our members, Winston, his band is playing out there, and I told him I'd be sure to mention it. So if you have no plans Friday at 5:00 at K-Tech, Car Show Band, Good Family Fun, I always want to promote those great organizations. So getting down to the ground rules, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna take questions from the crowd. I've actually got a couple of pocket questions that I came up with myself, I may kick us off with. But when your time comes, raise your hand. We have a runner here, a nice gentleman named John is gonna run the microphone to you. Ask your question. One thing though, no grandstanding, you know, throwing names. We are in a church and we have children, so please be civil. You know, these people, they're taking their time, and I can promise you, I've looked up the salary for the city council, it's not a lot. So just the fact that they're willing to serve really says a lot about their character. So whenever we get into that point, just keep that in mind and please stay on topic with your questions and keep your questions limited to one minute so we have more time to hear from these guys. So for you all, I don't think you're gonna be mentioning one another, but if somebody does mention you, you are allowed a one-minute rebuttal. But you get a three-minute opening remark and then two minutes to answer your questions. And then we'll go through as many questions as we can, and then we'll hop on to the mayor's election. For you guys, there's your timekeeper. You have your one-minute warning. Thirty-second warning, we'll say thirty-second warning, and then your time's up. Yep, there you go. So easy as that. We'll go through the questions, hopefully have a good night. We'll take a brief five-minute recess and then hop into our mayor's race. So without further ado, we'll get started. Ms. Donna Rainey, you will get our first question to get going. And I think I'm gonna use a question that I came up with, and I think it's a, here to start with. That's right, that's right. So if it's a bad question, if you see me flying, you know why. And so this is one that has, I try to think of questions. I'm from Pickens, so I can't vote in this race, but I tried to find things that were important to the voters of Easely. And a hot-topic item that I'm sure that you guys have run across and heard of is the limiting of city residents only to speak at elections, or I'm sorry, at city events. I think that's a big item that a lot of people have questions about. Long-standing ordinance that's been in place that seems to have just been enforced recently. I would love to get your guys' opinions on that, your thoughts on that. Is that something you agree with, disagree with? And go from there. So Ms. Rainey, we'll start with you.
I do not agree with them not allowing people outside the city to speak. When they're annexing land in, and it's across from your property, you have a right to speak because that impacts you immediately. The ordinance that they're claiming that does not allow for the people outside the city to speak, they've read it the way they want to read it. The ordinance actually reads, "City residents have a right to speak." That does not say people outside the city cannot speak. They're just letting you know, as a resident of the city, you do have a right to speak. So I think it's totally wrong what they did.
If you live even close, I think that people in the county should be able to also speak on the issues in the city. Because if you build, if you, like that annexation of land that was off of Sheriff's Mill Road, half of it was in the city and half of it was in the county. And half of it was like in Anderson. So those kids are gonna go to your school. They're gonna take, those roads are gonna be used by them. They're gonna be taking the school buses, the whole nine yards. And so I believe that they should have every right to speak at any council meeting or whatever. I think the input is very positive. I also believe that, I mean, they pay taxes too. Everybody should have a voice. And to shut someone down, just, if I live in the city and the line's right here, and you're gonna build a 160 homes, I should have something to say about it. You know, I lived here for 35 years. I should have every right to say, "No, that's too close. Y'all should back off, back up, or don't do it at all." And you know, if we would've heard more from the county people, it wouldn't have got this far. It wouldn't have got this ugly. But I do believe that everybody has a right and a say-so. That's all I gotta say about that.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander?
No, I don't support that decision to enforce that in that way. If you live across, if you're somebody, so the annexations, obviously that's not part of the city yet. If you're right there beside a property that's about to get annexed, that they're gonna build 200, 400, 1,000 homes on, absolutely, you deserve a voice at the table. When we only allow city residents, people who literally live in the city, to speak, and we know that whatever city council does is gonna affect people in the area. It's not just gonna affect city residents. So we're gonna, that shuts out our friends and our neighbors who work in the city, who own businesses in the city, who pay taxes in the city. They come and they spend the money. No. City council needs to be more open. It needs to be more transparent. That's why I'm committing that if I have the honor of serving, I'll hold at least two town halls a year, completely open to the public, to get input. I'll invite our state senators, state representatives in our area, the other city council. Because citizen input, we need more of it, not less. And so, no, I definitely do not support the current, the current move to limit who can speak. And that's why I am pledging that I would hold at least two town halls, two listening sessions a year, if I have the honor of serving.
Thank you. All right. Now we have my question out of the way. I'm coming to grab a microphone. Who else has a question from the crowd? Don't be shy. I don't have to call on somebody. Somebody's gotta have a question. There we go.
Justin. So Clay, we're going down the row, asking the same question of everyone, is that?
That's correct, and we're gonna, we're gonna round robin it, so Mr. Puckett will get first this time and then we'll continue to rotate through.
Got it. So I just, I would just like to know what your qualifications are for holding this office and why you think your special talents or your background lends itself to this role.
Okay, I've lived in the city for 35 years. I'm a small business owner. I've been the small business owner for 35 years. That's longevity, you know, and it's really, it's difficult, but it's worth it, you know. I've raised a daughter, a great daughter. I think that, I think I'm qualified because I have an opinion and I'm very passionate on the right things in life. Everybody should have an opinion. Everybody should be vocal about their opinion. And nobody should be shut down because you think differently. It's all in the conversation. I think that with my own eyes, I've seen the city really take a downturn in the past four years, where the, the traffic's just unbelievably terrible, getting worse every day. You can't make a left-hand turn on 123, which I have to do a lot, trying to get out of the city or into the city. Coming into the city from 123, that's like Talladega. You're coming in, you're coming in hot on, you know, on 123 coming from Clemson, you know. I just think that I have some ideas, and I really want to listen to the people that are in my ward and figure out what they want also. I'm just a mouthpiece for these people. And everybody that I've talked to, they kinda say the same thing. We gotta slow this growth down. We gotta worry about the traffic. We gotta worry about sewage. We gotta worry about schools. It's very important.
That's a great question. So after high school, I went to Furman University, graduated with a degree in political science, and then I did a paralegal post-bachelor's, paralegal program. Spent nine years working at a small law firm as a paralegal. So I'm very familiar and have a lot of experience with reviewing laws, regulations, ordinances, going through, looking for, you know, is there, is there a hidden effect? Are we gonna be adopting something that's gonna come back and bite us? Is there something that we're not seeing here? I did that for nine years. After that, I've worked in the mortgage industry for seven years. So every day I'm looking at figures. I'm looking at numbers. I'm looking at contracts. And so making sure that everything lines up. Obviously, a big part of being on city council is working with money. There was a forensic audit done recently that showed that some of the city accounts had not been reconciled in two years. It was what they call a negative audit finding. That just can't happen. I served for two years as a trustee at our church. It involves taking up the tithe, making sure the bills are paid, that employees are paid. So between my legal experience, my financial experience, I'm ready to hit the ground running. And that is, that is what helps me make a good candidate for this position. Thank you so much.
I graduated with honors from Columbia College, and I have my bachelor's of arts degree in public affairs. That degree is perfect for working either within a municipality, city, or even serving on the council. Because I am familiar with all the workings that go on within, you know, the towns and cities and all. Throughout my career, although I did not use that, I have worked in accounting offices. I have had budgets that I have been responsible for that were in the millions of dollars. A lot of the projects that I've ever been on, I have always come in under budget because I know how to take shortcuts to save money, but still get the job done and do it in a really good manner. The council is a legislative body of the city. A lot of people think that you're gonna have to know, you know, what public works do and things like that. It's not. It's to make sure that ordinances are followed. I probably know more about the ordinances than some of the members that are currently residing on city council. I have read the land use ordinances. I have read the zoning ordinances. I have also read the ordinance for the city of Easely. If somebody asks me a question, I can probably find that answer within 10 or 15 minutes because I know those documents very well. If I don't know the law that comes up, I know where to find it in the state code. So I think I will be a perfect candidate to serve for Ward 3.
Thank you. All right, time for another question. Oh, we have one in the back.
Can you hear me okay? Well, first of all, thank you all for stepping up to be in this role and for being here tonight. My question for all of you is, what do you think the top issue is facing Easely? Top issue and the second highest issue?
So hands down, the number one facing issue facing Easely right now is just the explosive growth. It's explosive growth of all these new developments that we don't have the infrastructure, especially the traffic infrastructure to deal with. A good example is Canon Land, the intersection at Canon Land Road, Olive Street, and Glenwood. It's extremely dangerous. If I have the privilege of serving, I'll work with Senator Rex Rice. He's the head of the Chief Hatz Committee that deals with road funding. I'll work with the South corner Department of Transportation. I'll work with our county council and our city administration to resolve the issues there at that intersection. Another issue is Highway 8. We've got the high school on Highway 8. We've got West End Elementary. Looking at the traffic studies, 10,000 cars a day on that road. It desperately needs to be widened. Another issue is our EMS. So Pickens County has about 18,000 emergency calls every year. Almost half of those come from the city of Easely, but we've only got a third of the stations. So I've been talking with Councilman Chris Bowers on this, and we definitely need another, we definitely need another EMS station that will help lower response times. And as we all know, in things like heart attacks, stroke, that is, response time is absolutely critical. As a second priority, I would say that we have to do a better job of our spending. We've had all these annexations, all of these new properties coming in, and yet the current city council has voted to raise your property taxes every year for the last four years. We need to do a better job on spending.
I totally agree with what Justin said about the annexation is causing the problems with the traffic. There's gonna be problems in the schools. There's gonna be problems with infrastructure. We already have stormwater issues that the city is not even paying attention to. And this new developments that's coming along are gonna add to it, and they'll still, they won't do anything about it. The second issue that I think is a great concern of mine is the spending. The city got $10.6 million of ARPA funds. That money was supposed to be spent on roads, infrastructure, to put out broadband so when the kids have to go to school from home, they have access to the internet. None of that happened. Somebody evidently told our current mayor he could spend that money on anything he wanted. Well, he spent $800,000 to remodel West End Hall. Does that benefit all the citizens of Easely? No. They did a program many years ago where, I don't remember which mayor it was, the federal government gave the city of Easely money so people who lived in substandard houses could bring their houses up to code. So instead of giving the money to the people, the mayor, and we're talking 20 years ago, gave them these low-interest loans. These people had been paying on those loans $10, $15 a month. They decided to forgive those loans and put $725,000 in the general fund. A lot of those people don't own those homes anymore. They're dead. Their children's living in them. So it's like, they just paid themselves $725,000. Butch has bought, thank you.
The more you learn, huh? I think that management would be my, the city management would be my first because that's where it all seems to spawn from. It comes from the officials, the people in charge, the people that hide things, the people that hide the way that they spend money. I mean, we need to have transparency. And, I mean, did, did any of you people, have you been polled about how many homes you want in your neighborhood, you know, that they're gonna build? They don't, they don't ask anybody. They just do. That's, that is irresponsible because they're doing before they can, before the roads are fixed. Before, I've seen more, just in the past maybe year, I guess it's because it's an election year or whatever, but I've seen more of those big black pipes and orange clay 'cause they're tearing out the old pipes and putting in new pipes. Well, that's fantastic, but you're doing that now? So why are you doing it now? Well, they're doing it now so that they can annex more land, take that land. It's called mass grading, and that's when they take a chunk of land and they'll just flatten it out. They take, you know, take all the trees down. I've driven down the road and all of a sudden, there's just nothing there anymore. And it's just massive grading, and then they're coming there and put in slab homes, you know, concrete homes that are on concrete. So mismanagement would be my number one. The growth without responsibility would be number two.
Thank you. All right, next question.
Good evening. The form of government in Easely is a mayor-council-form of government, which gives our mayor all the power to hire and fire whoever he wants to, the chief of police, the fire chief, the administrator. Would you be in favor of changing the form of government, like Greenville, Clemson, most other cities have, to a council-manager-form of government, which puts a lot of the power with the council and the administrator? I think if Mayor Nottswank Greenville, he has a council-manager-form of government. He does a great job for 28 years. I would love to see a change in the form of government in Easely and take away all the power from the mayor, which to me just sets our city up for a lot of corruption.
I totally agree. I have looked into that, and I do think the council, council-manager-form of government is probably the best one because like Ms. McAdams said, this will take the power from one person and distribute it among the council members as well as the current mayor. So everybody has an equal vote. Right now, the situation we have now is just like, our current mayor is preventing people from speaking in the council meetings if you're not a city resident. And then he also will not allow you to call a city employee out by name. It's very dangerous when you give somebody all the power because they're, like she said, that probably could lead to corruption. And we don't need that in this city. When one person has the power, nobody else has a say-so. And, you know, it's almost to the point, are we living in a communist city?
That's a very tough question. Thank you for asking it, 'cause I mean, that's, I've got mixed emotions about it. Yeah, our current administration, yeah, it is a little strange that, you know, whatever he wants, he gets. But see, the city council just votes whatever he wants. Whatever he wants. So yeah, it is almost like a dictatorship. To change the government, to me, in my point of view, I think that it's, you should talk to the people in your ward and ask them, "What do you think about this? What's your opinion on this? You've lived here for this many years. We've had this kind of government. It's not running the way that it's supposed to run." Counsel is to counsel the mayor, but he, and he only has one vote. We have six. So if he says, "This is the way that it's going now." If he says, "I wanna put new streetlights up here," everybody just goes boom, and it's all, and that's a done deal. Money spent, and it's done. Okay, so is the sitting city council now, are they even thinking about the future? You know, they should have a say-so, but they're not choosing to say anything. So the kind of government that we have right now, it's just not working. But it's designed to work well. And the other form of government is designed to work well also. And I do like that other, you know, council-driven, telling the mayor what to do. I like that too. I don't know where I stand on this one.
So I'm gonna do something. One of my good friends last night said, "Justin, don't do this." I'm gonna tell you that I can see both sides of this issue. And so I do, I like the, in theory, the tension between having a mayor and a city council, kind of a division of powers where each, you know, where the mayor is making a decision, what he believes best for the city as a whole. We would be representing our individual wards first and foremost. Of course, I'm running for Ward 5. I, I see the value in that, and I definitely see the value in moving to a council administrator form. I do like that kind of diffusion of power there. And so that it, there is not one person overridingly in control. I don't know that the issues that we're dealing with right now are so much based on the structure of the government, but who is actually in those seats currently? And so I would say that I'm definitely open to looking at changing the form of government, but I'm not gonna commit that that's, that that's something that I would do. Let's get some other people. Let's get the people in this stage on the city council that may resolve our issue. And if not, then we can certainly look at that. And so, yep. He also said, don't, Justin, don't end your sentences with saying, yep. And so all I got to say to that is, yep.
While we're good on time, Ms. Rainey has a correction she'd like to make to a statement.
Well, I don't know if it's a correction, but I would like to inform the audience that the council cannot change the form of government. It will take an election by the people to change the form of government. The county, county, the city council can present an ordinance to have the election.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next question. I've got a backup if we don't have one. I do have one. Let's change speeds a little bit with, with this question. So looking at business in the city, I'd like to know each of your strategy to foster business in the city, and then, you know, maybe you can go in further, what is the role of council fostering businesses in the city? Is it just to get out of the way? Is it to do this or that? So I'd like to get your guys' take on that, on fostering local business. What's the role of city council in that position?
I think that city council should help small businesses thrive in the city, much more than bringing just the population in, in the housing. The silos downtown, that pizza place just closed down, you know, that closed up shop. And they put a lot, I think the city put a lot of money into the silos in trying to make a place for people to go so that you're, just don't come home and have nothing to do and watch TV and just, you know, nothing. Life becomes really, really dull. I think Easley is a beautiful city, and I think, you know, places like the silos are, the beautification of the city is a great idea. It's much better to help small businesses than, I mean, I'm not saying just pull them out if they're, if they're not doing, if they're not pulling their share, let them sink. Bottom line. But if they're really trying and really striving and wanting to do good in the city, I say help them, you know, I really do. As far as what city council does, I'm one-seventh of the people voting for what to do now, or if I get elected, you know? So I can express my intent and direction that I would like to go, but I don't have total say-so. But I think that it's a, it's a great idea, I really do.
So I think that the main role, the way that city council can help business and promote business is to be an advocate, and is to, you know, to essentially sell our city, not a, sell out our city, but sell our city, you know? Go to businesses, tell them why they wanna be in Easley, tell them about our wonderful downtown, about our people, about just the beauty of the area and kinda what we stand for. I don't believe that the government should be in the business of helping pick winners and losers in the marketplace, that, I just don't believe in that. The best thing that we can do to promote business is two things. Make sure that we've got a well-developed infrastructure that's not overloaded by the new developments, so traffic and commerce and goods can move smoothly so that they've got, you know, the, the water infrastructure, the solid waste infrastructure, make sure those things are in place and not overloaded. That's gonna help businesses to thrive. And then also providing consistency. One of the big things that we, that go into the city council meetings that I hear is these ordinances, these land use ordinances, these business ordinances are not being applied consistently. And so consistency is what business owners are gonna be looking for so that they know if we put X dollars here, we can expect X return, we're not gonna be dealing with, you know, a sudden issue that now we have to lower all of our signs three feet. Now we, you know, we can't sell this particular hair product in, in, in this area because the zoning has changed. And so, and also keeping the property taxes low.
We have a chamber of commerce for that particular reason. They are the ones who should be responsible for promoting these businesses, and I don't think that's being done. I don't know what the issue is, but several business people that I have spoken with have complained that the chamber is not stepping up. So maybe we need to investigate why the chamber is not doing its job. With all the issues that cities have, that Easley has today, I would think trying to support any business monetarily needs to take a back burner until we get the other issues resolved. Infrastructure is gonna cost a lot of money, we're gonna have a lot of stormwater issues, that's gonna take a lot of money. One thing that I have noticed, and I actually counted them, a few years ago, there were twenty-six check cashing places, just on 123. We seem to have a burst of Mexican restaurants. We need a city planner who goes out and finds businesses to come into easily. So we have a wider variety, and people will be, you know, supporting these businesses if it's ones that's coming in. Now, I don't think anybody should go into business unless they've done their homework. You just can't decide one day, I'm gonna open up a pizza parlor and have no clue how to run a business. I don't think it's the taxpayers' responsibility to educate you. You can go and take classes, sometimes you can even find classes free of charge that will help you establish a business. But right now, I think helping businesses out financially is, should be put on the back burner, but you can give them support and encourage the chamber of commerce to do their job.
Thank you. All right, next question. All right, we got one back here.
How are you gonna handle the continual growth that's going on here? Is there gonna be a moratorium for a while to give us a chance to settle in? Is there gonna be some, some kind of plan to bring about the growth of this city in a manner in which we can handle?
Thank you. So county council, so the county currently has a development moratorium. I am absolutely, I would absolutely be in favor of that for the city for a limited period of time. That said, I would want, I would definitely want it to be targeted, I want it to be focused to make sure that we are, we are protecting the character of Easley, that we're protecting the quality of life, but that we also, you know, when the infrastructure is there, that we're allowing that growth, because, you know, it's organic growth. But yeah, until we get a handle on what we already have, yes, I would definitely support that, I would support. So the city council recently adopted new zoning ordinances that had to do with subdivision density, and what they adopted, my understanding, is significantly a laxer than what the county is looking at. The, the amount of tree coverage is a good deal laxer than what the county is doing. And so, you know, we don't need to be, we don't need to be kinda the dumping ground for development that the county won't take because the, the density is too high. And so, yeah, I would definitely be in support of that.
I'm in favor of a moratorium until we can get a plan to handle this rapid growth. Several months ago, one of the council people did try to get a moratorium, and she was voted down. I don't understand why, because of this growth that we have and the issues that we have, why that was voted down. And the quest, the, the whole point of the moratorium was to come up with a plan how to handle this growth. We can't stop growth, we've got to have it, but we can be smart about it. And the city's not being smart. My opponent, I checked her voting record, she voted for twenty-plus annexations in the three and a half years. That's a lot. Too fast. When I first moved to Easley, I really didn't even have to stop at my stop sign to pull out onto Highway Eight. The only thing I had to worry about was who was coming out of Ingalls. Now I have to be at the mercy of people letting me out onto Highway Eight. That's not right. That's too much, too soon, and they're not doing anything about it. So we definitely need to put some kind of moratorium to get a plan out there on how we're gonna handle all of this. Because it's an issue, and it's an issue for everybody, not just a few people.
I would definitely support a moratorium on the building that they're coming up with. It's like, I was talking to Rex Rice the other day about this, and it's like, someone just takes a, a stone and throws it into the lake, and you have ripples. Well, they've opened the door to builders, these, these huge builders, that just come in, and they build garbage homes, and within ten years, these garbage homes turn into slums, you know? And then there's your crime, there's your, there's your, you know, everything just goes downhill. So what I would, a moratorium, I would definitely say, yeah. My opponent says you can't, you can't stop growth cuz you'll kill the city. Well, on the other side of that coin, if you build everywhere to where there's nowhere else to build, that city's dying that way also. So we have to, and you don't have to build every single square inch in one man's lifetime. It's not a race. We want quality instead of quantity. You know, this is our home, this is where we live, this is where we die. Let's get quality. A quality of life is what we need here, while we still have it. You know, the trees, the whole nine yards, we don't need them all gone. You ain't gotta cut it down. That's the way I feel about that one.
Thank you. So we have, it's hard, hard to believe the time's getting away from us. We have time for one more question, then obviously, we're gonna allow them to have closing remarks. So, oh, we have a question right here. So this will be the last question for these, these candidates here.
You know, I probably don't need that.
So the, so for the, for the audio, for the people watching.
I, you know, I'm hearing about growth, we all know it's coming, I'm hearing that we need to put some type of restrictions in place, follow certain criterias. What I'm not hearing is, is anyone thinking about the current problems that we do have that don't get to be mentioned? And I've been coming to these meetings on and off for two years, I'm still waiting for someone to give me an answer about the flooding issues in Easley, and why the town claims that they have no record of it, and why they think the people should pay out of pocket instead of them doing the job correctly to rectify the problem. Because this is not standard maintenance, it's beyond standard maintenance when you, you're losing your property, and, and they're turning a blind eye to it. So I guess my question is, do you plan on looking back at what the current problems are as well? Because that's your foundation. You don't fix the foundation, it's just like building a house. Foundation is not solid, guess what? Anything you do going forward, it's gonna not do well.
Thank you. This is Ms. Rainey's turn.
You have a very good point. I know we're always talking about future, you know, growth and, you know, what's gonna happen down the road after these builders leave, but she's absolutely right. We have current problems out there that the city is ignoring, and we're talking about ignoring for years. I happen to know, she lives in my neighborhood, I know it's her and the guy next door. They're actually losing their property. It's down ten inches, and that's a problem, and the city turns their back. I understand that the mayor did come out there, but, yeah, she hadn't heard anything since. The mayor came out, and his due diligence was a total of five minutes standing on my property, okay? So he did his job, he came out, but that's all. And that's all he did. And it's not only the stormwater issues, it's the roads. There are roads all over that really needs attention in this city, but what did the city council do, what, either last month or month before last? Took in another subdivision's roads. They're taking roads in, but yet, they won't fix the ones they already have. So we do have an issue, and I am planning on addressing these when I'm elected.
I live in a subdivision that was, it was built back, I think it was eighty, no, ninety-three. And I think it was about 2010, we started getting sinkholes because it was a creek, there was a creek running, and they decided to put this creek inside of a metal corrugated steel pipes, and then wrapped those with, or banned the two pieces together with, with metal. Well, the Romans knew back a couple thousand years ago that you don't do that, you put it in concrete. Well, of course, the bottoms all rusted out, and we started getting sinkholes cuz one pipe would drop and it would just deteriorate. I had a sinkhole in my yard that you could fit a Volkswagen in. It was, and I had it so long, I started dressing it up at Halloween and Christmas time. The city came out and put in a couple traffic cones, and that's all they did. One sinkhole in my neighborhood was so bad that when it would rain, it would, it was, it was probably, I mean, fifteen foot deep. And then, once it would rain, you would get a rush of water coming in, it would circle and come up to the top. If a kid had gotten in there, someone's child would've gotten in there, they would've been torn to shreds, they would've instantly died. Water runoff is a big, is a big thing for me because I still have issues. I brought in eighteen truckloads of dirt that I paid for, not the city, I paid for, and that was expensive. And they didn't care. Eventually, they did take care of it.
I can get him to take care of it because I need some advice.
We, I, what I did was I started finally just going on Facebook and started just blowing up, blowing up the city, blowing up the city. Showing the pictures of Freddy Krueger crawling out of this thing. You know, I had a smoke machine down in the one that was in my yard, and it was smoking, and it looked like a movie set. It was, it was horrible. But they don't understand that if someone would have lost a child in that, I mean, we're talking to maybe five to ten of these giant sinkholes, giant. I mean, they've taken up some people's entire front yards. So their, their house just went from, you know, whatever they paid for it, down to nothing, cuz you can't sell it, you know? So your property value is gone. You have no investment anymore. The city would've been sued to oblivion, but they didn't care. So I went on, started going on Facebook, started just blowing up, you know, sending pictures out there. We finally got, I went to a couple meetings and expressed my concerns, but that fell on deaf ears. You know, the city didn't wanna hear it. They said, you know, we'll get to it, we'll get to it, we'll get to it. Well, they never got to it until I just started... Well, they never got to it until I just started blowing up Facebook, there was social media, and it made the city look bad. But it, when I looked out my driveway, the city looked terrible, and it did it for probably eight to 10 years, that I had a hole in my front yard that could have hurt someone. They didn't care. Good luck, good luck. Throw some votes this way, and we'll, you know, maybe we can take care of it.
I've got to say, I did not, I did not have a Freddy Krueger reference on my bingo card for tonight, so that's impressive. Mr. Alexander?
How do I follow that? So, yeah, you're absolutely right. There are a lot of existing problems, a lot of problems that have already been created that need to be addressed, like the Canaan Land intersection, the Highway 8, the EMS. But like Michael said, you know, these are not just some kind of abstract philosophical political questions. The decisions that City Council makes affect people's lives. They affect the quality of life, and like you said, I mean, this literally can be, the decisions that City Council makes can literally be life or death.
It seems like they don't answer to anyone, though.
Well, and, and so, let me say this. So, we, and I, you may or may not be familiar with this, so there was a huge development that was proposed off Sheriff Mill Road, and people started showing up at City Council, and people kept showing up. We started speaking. A lot of people started speaking. That's when they started enforcing the rule that said only city residents could speak because too many people were showing up and speaking. It's like Michael said, he had to get the attention. He had to go on Facebook and just post, 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 post. Now, I'm not advocating just, not advocating just doing that, but that's a cert, that's absolutely an important thing. But it's both, it's both frustrating to see how much effort it takes to get city officials, to get the elected officials to move, but it's also inspiring to see it's possible. And so, I've been really blessed by having a lot of people that have, you know, been encouraging, that have been supporting me, and so, I want to thank you all for that. But there is, there is hope, and we can make a difference. We can make things better.
Thank you, thank you. So, we've had some wonderful questions tonight, and I appreciate all of you that asked a question. There were some good ones and some wonderful insight provided by these candidates. Now, we'll have our closing remarks. Each of you guys will get three minutes for your closing statement. If you'll state the ward that you're running for, who currently holds the seat, and we'll start with you, Mr. Puckett.
Sure. Brian Garrison is over Ward 1 right now, and that's the ward that I'm running for. He's not running, so Mr. O'Shields is running against me, and, you know, he's for everything that I'm against, basically. The water runoff is a huge, huge thing for me because I've been affected. The schools are overcrowded. Your kids are not getting the education that they deserve, and they're not getting the education that you're paying for. They're way overcrowded. So, we're going to put the next school, we're going to put it somewhere on the other side of town, but there's going to have to be something coming up. Crime, drugs, homelessness, be prepared because if this stays like the way it is, that's what's coming to you. And so, figure out what you're going to say and how you're going to get rid of it, because it's coming. The homelessness is, what are you going to do? Where are you going to put them? That's a hard question. That's a really difficult idea. So, I'm running for Ward 1. If you know anybody over in Ward 1, tell them, say, "Hey, Mike said hi." You know, give me a vote. I appreciate it, and thank you for all, thank you for coming out and making this not so terrible.
So, I want to thank the church and the club for hosting this tonight. It's very gracious of them. I'm Justin Alexander, and I'm running for Easely City Council in Ward 5. It's currently represented by Nancy Brazil. She seems to be a very nice lady, but I just happen not to agree with the way she's voting a lot of times. I'm 43 years old. I've lived in the upstate for all of my life. I've been married to my wife Anna here for 12 years, and she's my biggest supporter. I've been politically involved for a long time, but I've never held elected office. Now, Easely does face a lot of challenges. Overdevelopment, there's issues with the budget, and we have to maintain the, our quality of life. But with my background, with my experience, and with your help, I'm ready to meet these challenges head-on.
I'm running for Ward 3, which is Pat Webb's ward. Pat and I don't have a good record because she doesn't even answer my emails anymore, but as I said before, she has voted for 20-plus annexations, knowing full well the city did not have a plan. And when they were questioned, it's like, they don't care. We need to get people on that council that care, that actually will take the citizens into consideration. There's a few on there that are good, I will say that, but then, there are some that they really do need to go. I saw a problem, and I figured if I don't fix it, who will? I believe I do have the background. I have the drive and the initiative. I'm retired, so I have all the time in the world, but this is our last stop. My husband and I moved here, and we had agreed, "We're not moving anymore, we're going to stay here, and I want this city to be the best it can be," because I know we can do better. And from what I've seen, it's like, they don't care about the citizens, they only care about themselves. And when you call up there, and, well, not up there, but, you know, when you call Pat or, I don't know if anybody else has ever called their representative, and you don't get a call back, that's wrong. That is absolutely wrong. And a lot of times, it seems like the members aren't prepared. There was an incident one time where an ordinance, the city was selling land. I read the ordinance. There was a mistake in it. They had the land was going to be sold for $8, but nobody else caught that. And it's like, well, do y'all not even read the ordinances? Because that should have been caught before it came before the council. It wasn't even caught during the work session. So, that tells me there that, are they just going through the motions? We don't want people on that council that goes through the motions. We want people who's actually going to do something, and I will be that person.
Thank you all. We're, yeah, give these guys a round of applause again. They did a wonderful job. I appreciate their willingness to come and to be heard and to take your questions. That certainly means a lot, and I appreciate the insight that each of these individuals provide. We're going to take a quick, maybe five-minute reset and come right back. So, thank you, guys.